I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 13th, 2020, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive for Residents to Stay at Home and Guidance About Limiting Person-to-Person Contact Due to COVID-19 Pandemic, this meeting is being conducted via video conference in accordance with the Minnesota Statutes 13D.021. In addition, the school board has determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular location. The district did make accommodations for public comment, which I will outline when we get to that point in the agenda. Welcome, everyone. It's certainly really uplifting to see everyone tonight. Thank you to Anita Ozzy and Dr. Hillman for taking care of the myriad of details to ensure tonight's video conference meeting will run smoothly. I just wanted to run through a few procedural aspects of the meeting before we move forward on the agenda. We will begin by taking board members' attendance by roll call. Anita Ozzy will name, will call the name of each board member in alphabetical order by last name. When your name is called, please respond by saying "present." Anita?
Braniac.
Present.
Gerwitz.
Present.
Present.
Iverson.
Present.
Pritchard.
Present.
Quinell.
Present.
Stratmon.
Present.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Also present at this video conference meeting are Dr. Hillman, Superintendent Anita Ozzy, Dr. Hillman's Administrative Assistant Val Murdistorf, District's Director of Finance, Erin Bailey, District's Director of Community Education, Josh Cooper, Senior Project Manager for Knutson Construction, and tonight, we also welcome as observers Harry Knight from Kim Radio and Sam Wilmes, Reporter with the Northfield News. And we would certainly be remiss in not thanking them now for their efforts in keeping our community informed during these uncertain times. So, thank you, Sam and Terry, for being observers at tonight's meeting. Procedurally, also, board members are asked to mute their microphone when they are not speaking. During the course of the meeting, when a motion and a second is required, Dr. Hillman will initiate the unmute for all board members. Also, the screen will display the agenda item being discussed. At the start of each discussion, as Chair, I will call on each board member in alphabetical order by last name for any questions or comments. If you don't wish to speak, you are certainly welcome to pass. I will conduct only one round of questioning per issue for board members. If board members have a follow-up question or comment, that's great. Just consider using the raise hand feature in order to be recognized by the Chair. When we proceed to items for individual action, all votes on these items will be conducted by roll call by Anita Ozzy. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, and access to the recording will be posted to the school district website as soon as is reasonably possible. So with that, we will move on to the agenda. Dr. Hillman, there was one item in the table file.
Yes, this evening, we have one item in the table file, something we're thrilled to share with you. It's a substantial grant for Kaboom playground equipment that will be installed at the existing Greenville Park Elementary, soon to be the Northfield Community Education Center.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objections, we'll add to the, this item to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Ellen Gerwitz.
It was Amy.
Amy.
I'm sorry, there's a second by Amy. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We will have a roll call vote now to approve the agenda. Anita?
Braniac.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Quinell.
Hi.
Hi. Noel. Yep, good.
Okay, thank you. We have an approved agenda. A public comment. To accommodate the important public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that followed the district policy regarding public comment would be read by myself, the board chair, at this time. So there were no public comments submitted for this board meeting. So we have covered the public comment portion of the agenda. We can move now to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have a couple of announcements today and recognitions. First, we want to congratulate Ella Hollerin, who earned a gold award, which means she was top 5% in the state, for her Science and Engineering Fair project called WISP, Wearable Individualized Sensory Product, a therapy tool for those with autism and sensory processing challenges at the State Science and Engineering Fair Award Ceremony on April 1st. Ella also earned the Middle School Seagate Rising Star Award, first place for the Middle School Free M Innovation Award, and the Wolfram Research Award. Ella has been nominated for the Broadcom Masters Rising Star. Thank you to Stephanie Mill Hall, District OT, and her guidance and expertise. And so we congratulate Ella on this really prodigious success. She just did an outstanding job. As you know, as part of our work in responding to COVID-19, our child nutrition staff has been preparing and delivering meals. And what we have is, in the 18 weekdays that we have served these meals, we have served over 6,800 breakfasts and over 6,900 lunches. Very, very impressive. Our final announcement is, is something that's very sad, and it's with a heavy heart that I shared, that Kristen Kraft, a first-grade teacher at Sibley Elementary, lost both her parents recently due to complications with COVID-19. Kristen's mother, Frances, passed away last Sunday, and her father, Jack, passed away yesterday in New Jersey. Again, Kristen is a first-grade teacher at Sibley, and many of us know her husband David and their six children, graduates Katie and Michael, senior Matthew, sophomore David, eighth grader Joshua, and fifth grader Elijah. And so I ask that you hold the Kraft family in your thoughts at this time. Those are your announcements and recognitions for this evening.
Okay, board members, I won't go through the roll call on whether board members have anything to add, but we can pause for a moment if board members have anything they would like to add.
I have lost signal. It's Noel. I have lost my screen picture.
Well, we can hear you, Noel, so we're good, and we can see you as well.
I can't see anybody. How do I do that?
Um.
I touched the keyboard inadvertently and lost everything.
Okay, well, why don't you just hold, because we can hear you and see you, Noel.
Right.
So why don't we just hold on for right now? Is that okay?
Yep, fine.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We will move now on now to items for discussion and report. And our only item tonight is the COVID-19 Distance Learning Update and District Operations. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, well, I'd like to share with you this evening the work that the school district has done over the last. It seems incredible, but it's been less than a month since Governor Walz ordered schools to close their facilities and move their instruction to a distance learning platform. And so in that time, as you all know, we learned about that on Sunday, March 15th. We had school on March 16th and 17th and began our closure on March 18th in alignment with what the executive order said. Our teachers worked on that Thursday and Friday to prepare for distance learning. Then we had spring break, and our teachers came back on March 30th for one more day of preparation. So I think we should be incredibly proud of our teaching staff and everyone in the district for turning this around so quickly. Many school districts were able to use that full week when we were on spring break to prepare their plans and then actually then went on spring break. So if you really think about it, we basically had three full days for teachers to prepare for distance learning, and I'm very proud of the work that they have done. A couple of items that I'd like to share is that it's clear now that the district's previous investments in tablet computers, our iPads, Schoology, and CSO software platforms that we use have really come into play as a very positive investment during this time, where we know, we see school districts across the country where they were doing mass orders of devices for students. We had those items in hand. Our technology staff and Hope Langston, who is in charge of our connectivity, reached out to kindergarten through second graders who do not have one-to-one devices, and we were able to survey families to see who needed a device and who didn't. We have one iPad for every two students in grades K1 and 2, and we've been able to provide everyone in the district a device and actually have some additional to replace item or devices that may, you know, again, devices break from time to time. That's part of our regular protocol when we're in school, and we still have that happen from time to time, even in this environment. We had a team of educators led by Hope Langston and Kim Briskie and staff from Torch and Growing Up Healthy, who led a campaign to make sure that every student has access to the internet. And what I'm very proud of is that as of now, we have, as of Friday, we had installed or scheduled the install for internet access for every student in the district. Now, since then, we've had a couple of more pop up. So we will, while we hit our 100% goal of having people be ready to be addressed, we still have a few more who are popping up, and we're still waiting for a few of the installs. Some people are getting free access through Charter, the Spectrum service. We have a very creative partnership with Northfield WiFi, a local provider that was funded by Northfield Healthy Community Initiative for about 15 families who are eligible for their service. And we thank both Northfield WiFi and HCI for their support. And then we also had acquired 50 T-Mobile hotspots, which we have some left to be able to make sure that we can address needs that come up as we move ahead. We are taking attendance, and it's being tracked. Taking attendance in the distance learning environment is different, obviously, than in the face-to-face environment, and we're trying to take attendance via engagement rather than just somebody checking off a list. But we are looking at a variety of different ways and are monitoring and adjusting the work that we're doing with attendance to make sure that we're engaging everyone. Each school has a team of people who are watching and trying to see which students have not engaged. They're reaching out and calling. We're using a number of different features to be able to connect with families if we've not heard from them. And so I think the board should be really proud of the work that people have done to get to this point. Also, we started collecting feedback from families and staff today. Today, our teacher survey went out, as well as our family survey just a couple of hours ago. As you also know, we have a robust program to care for the children of healthcare and emergency workers. This is free childcare for workers defined as Tier One, work, essential workers. That's from the guidance from the state of Minnesota. We offer it Monday through Friday, 6:30 AM to 6:00 PM, though we're only required to provide it during the traditional school day. But we had been asked, could we provide it for the entire day? And we think that's really important to support the human capital at Northfield Hospital and other surrounding medical centers. The childcare center is staffed by three teams, taking one-week rotations. This includes venture childcare employees, educational assistants, and school nurses. There are some strict medical screening procedures that are taken upon entry. I have visited the childcare site eight or so times, and every time I walk in, my temperature is taken. There's a protocol for the, how high the temperature is. Most kids, it's one time you take the temperature. If a temperature is above a certain threshold, which I don't know what that threshold is right now, they, our students are allowed to come, but their temperature is checked throughout the day. And if they are above a certain temperature, then they are not allowed to attend. And we have not had anyone not allowed to attend or sent home as of yet, is my understanding. And we are averaging between, we also had a group of volunteers who last weekend gave up their weekend to sew fabric face masks to be available at the childcare center. On Friday, the 3rd, the CDC came out with a recommendation suggesting that people in, people in locations where you could not maintain the six-foot social distancing wear fabric masks, especially if you're in a community where there's a high amount of community spread of the disease. Of course, we don't have that yet here in Rice County. But we had a team of people who sewed a lot of masks over the weekend to make sure that those were available for people, as well as plastic gloves or, gloves are also available for people who are working there. In addition, our custodians are disinfecting areas multiple times a day. They're using a fogging machine that uses a chemical that's very fine and doesn't even wrinkle paper, but has a 99.99% kill rate, and it has been proven to kill the novel coronavirus COVID-19, the novel coronavirus that we're working through right now. So I'm really proud of the work. Erin Bailey is on the video conference tonight, as well as Cheryl Hall and Sarah Pratt. These are the three people who have really led the charge on making sure that the childcare center was up and operational. We hear a lot about personal protective equipment. However, we need to make sure that the hospitals also have the human resources to be able to address the medical conditions that we're facing as a result of COVID-19. As I reported in the announcements, we are also offering free meals for children each weekday. We are providing several bus routes, as well as three drive-up locations in town. And I had shared that we were averaging 1,091 meals per day between March 30th and April 8th. And as you've seen, we've gone over the 6,800 mark on both of those. And we do anticipate that there'll be some reimbursement for these meals from the United States Department of Agriculture. And what I want to point out in both of these cases, both with childcare and with the meals, the executive order that Governor Walz issued did not require that school districts provide those services during any previously planned school breaks. So during the five days of our spring break and the one teacher workday that we had on March 30th coming out of that spring break, we would not have been required to provide those services. However, we did provide those services, albeit in a little bit more of a limited fashion, you know, providing students two meals on Monday and Wednesday of that week rather than doing something every day. We still got people five meals for the week. It was, just looked a little different, and we had some slightly reduced hours at the childcare center during spring break. But we're very proud to answer Governor Walz's call to make sure that we are stepping up and helping the state in its COVID-19 response. When we think about district operations, want to share, and we'll share in the construction report later, that construction right now continues unabated, and we are still scheduled to be completed on time. Knutson Construction has shared with us that the pandemic has the possibility to slow the schedule, but to this point, as of my last conversation with Josh Cooper, we were still on track. We do have some concerns about some of the materials for the Longfellow project that we are going to be bidding tonight or approving the bids tonight. However, we know that that, if there's one to be delayed, we know that that's the, probably the best project to be delayed. You also see that most of the employees in the district are working from home using district-provided computer equipment. We have closed access to schools. The, the executive order for sheltering in place is intended to reduce person-to-person contact by 80%. And so what we have done is we have shut our schools, except for the childcare and the food service. And then staff are able to access the building, but they need to contact me, and then we activate their badge. So it's not that we're trying to, you know, really restrict access, but we're trying to make people think twice before they have to come to school. And we're approving several people a day. You know, just one example is, we have some science teachers who don't, don't feel they should bring equipment home to record an experiment. They're recording that experiment in the school and then going home and uploading the video. So those are just some of the kinds of things that our staff who are working from home are doing. In addition, our custodians are on-site because there's only a few of them per building. They are able to maintain social distancing, and they are starting to get a head start on deep cleaning that would normally take place in the summer months. Our technology staff have been phenomenal. I came to the district 10 years ago, and we only have one-half of an FTE more than we had then. And now we have a six-technology staff serving approximately 4,500, almost all mobile devices. And our, it is one of the things that we're so proud of, of how we are able to pivot very quickly and move to this distance learning approach because we had the technology infrastructure and we had the people in place to assist. These people are working very hard. They're very busy. But we really, they're the, they're unseen. I always say that the technology department, you know, people don't ever notice them until something doesn't work, right? And it's all of the work that they do behind the scenes to make sure it works. So again, wonderful job by our tech staff. And our district continues to ensure that payroll is met and that our bills are paid in a timely fashion. As you know, these operations are critical to continue supporting our local economy during this pandemic. All spring events have been canceled. All spring athletics have been canceled through May 4th right now in alignment with the distance learning period. And school administrators are continuing to look at ways that they can host traditional events, such as commencement, in alternative formats, should that become necessary. And then I just want to thank both the Northfield News and KYMN Radio. KYMN has given me quite a bit of access to come in and share updates with the community on a very regular basis, and I think that that's been a very positive thing. We have been sending lots of emails. We've done at least 16 emails to families and posted six KYMN interviews. All of our emails are translated into Spanish, and they are archived on the district website. Finally, we have also hosted three district-wide webinars, which has been kind of fun. We've either read stories to children via Zoom. We also had Cindy Boyham, a local health and wellness expert, provide some information for families about self-care during this difficult time. One thing that Val Murdistorf in her budget report is going to share are the financial implications of COVID-19, of which frankly, we are still getting our arms around, as everyone is. We know that we're very grateful that the state had a very large, more than $1.5 billion surplus. We also know that we are providing the childcare to emergency and healthcare workers right now without any guarantee of receiving any funding from the state. Meanwhile, many of our revenue streams, such as lunches, lunches and breakfasts being paid, our normal childcare participants, a number of revenue streams have also been lost, obviously because of our inability to be at school. So we are still, every school district in the state is still wrapping its head around what are the long-term financial implications of this. And so we've, we really have a double whammy. We have some of these costs that, you know, we are not sure are going to be completely reimbursed. We're also having some, there are some bills and some other things that because we're not receiving a service, that we're no longer incurring. We are, for example, our transportation contract, we're paying in full because we have a contract with them, but we are not doing hourly activity buses. So that's just one example of how we're maintaining some funding streams, but not others. And Val will go through that in greater detail as part of her budget report. But we, we have frozen all spending within the district with some specific exceptions that Val will also go through as well. So that is my report on the COVID-19 preparation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that board members have.
Okay, just as a reminder, board members, we will have, board members will have now the opportunity for questions or comments for Dr. Hillman. I will conduct one round of questioning per issue for board members. And if you do have a follow-up question or comment, you can consider using the raise hand feature in order to be recognized. So I'll begin with Tom. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thanks, Noel. Pass.
Okay. Amy?
Yes, I don't really have a question, but I just want to thank Dr. Hillman and the staff for the amazing work that they've done to have our school district transfer to online distance learning. The amount of work that they did in such a short time period is very impressive. Thank you, Dr. Hillman, and to all your staff as well.
It is our pleasure.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. Rob?
I have no question at this time.
Okay. Ellen?
So yeah, I'd like to say what Amy said, you know, thank you to everyone. And what I thought was remarkable about that report was just shining a light on when we talked about continuous improvement, and you and Dr. Hillman and Dr. Hardy had visited Wisconsin years back, and how it was every role within a district is really focused on the whole student and how you see under these really trying times, that playing out with absolutely every position. It just, I just found it absolutely remarkable. I had one question. I was curious about with how that worked with, and it may be that this is pulling into Val's report, but in terms of the bus routes with the nutrition and food, and then our current bus contract, how does, how does that work? Is this, and how does that work for the bus drivers? I just wasn't sure how that, that played out.
So the, the buses that are going out for child nutrition, that is included in our contract. We are not paying anything additional for that. So we are, we were required to continue paying our contracted services as long as that employer would continue to pay their workers. And so Benjamin Bus is continuing to pay their workers. Benjamin Bus has been excellent. They have offered whatever they can do for us. We had considered at one point, when we were looking at the internet connectivity of doing what some other districts have done, of driving some of the WiFi-enabled buses to specific parts of the neighborhood. We did have some concerns about that because it would encourage the gathering of students in an area that may exceed the number of people recommended by this CDC. But Benjamin Bus has been willing to step forward to do whatever that we have asked them to do. And so the bus routes that we're doing for child nutrition, those are included in our contract.
Excellent. Thank you, Ellen. Jeff?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Noel?
I'd like to compliment the people in the trenches that are really keeping the district going and the ones that are working with the students, probably in an environment, a technology environment, they didn't expect to have to be in. But I really admire the work that's done and the progress that's been making, being made. Thank you all.
And Julie, if I can just build on that for one moment. The folks who are working from home, supporting our students are outstanding. And then we also need to give a special recognition to those staff members who are taking the rotation through the childcare center because it is a, it is a place where we have people who are gathering in larger group than what I think many people are comfortable with. But at the same time, we have this responsibility to answer Governor Walz's call to care for the children of our healthcare and our emergency workers. And so I think we need to give special recognition to our venture staff, to our site leads, to our administrators on-site, to our educational assistants, and to our school nurses, who are all making this work. And we won't lie, it's, it's, it's a little nerve-wracking for people, you know, because we are in a heightened sense of just understanding how this virus is affecting all of us. But these people are showing up, and they're caring for the children. They're helping them complete their distance learning. And so while everyone's playing a really big role, I just want to give a special shout-out to the people who are at the childcare center because again, they are working face-to-face with children and giving them the best experience they possibly can during these difficult times. So thanks, Noel, for teeing that up for me.
Excellent. Thank you, board members, for your comments. And again, I, I don't think there's a way that we could give enough praise or enough recognition or enough thank you to those out there doing the work. And it was really gratifying. We had a Communications Advisory Committee meeting the other day, and there were some parents there that were able to share some of their perspectives. And they have been, you know, really had, had a lot of compliments for the way the district has handled this. I think they, I think parents understand what a huge undertaking this was. And a couple of things that came to the surface was the proactive communication, and we have Dr. Hillman to thank for that, really anticipating the next step before, and getting to that next step before anyone had quite gotten there. And so the, the communication, they appreciated the proactive nature of the communication. And I know Matt and Anita have, have really worked hard to, to be able to provide that communication at the right time, when parents were just wondering about it. There was the email in their inbox that explained how that was going to happen. I think one thing that was, been really heartwarming, I think, is to hear this, the personal stories and the inspiring stories that Dr. Hillman has shared with us about the work the staff has done. One highlight and bright spot, of course, there's many, but one is the way the building principals are communicating morning announcements and having a lot of fun with that. And I think it's a bright spot to the kids' day. And so it's been really fun to hear those stories. And I think the other thing that, you know, we have, have set ourselves, I, I think, above and beyond is the way Dr. Hillman has been very careful to talk about the whole student and really providing the, the social-emotional resources for both students, staff, and parents. And I think that's been really key. And so, Dr. Hillman, when you say that we should be proud as a board, I think we are incredibly proud as a board. So thank you for all of that. We, we have no idea, we do have an idea, but we have a great sense for what's happening behind the scenes, yet we're not there doing that work. So we know it's hard, and, and we hope that- So we know it's hard and, and we hope that the gratitude and that the appreciation we have for everyone in this district at this point will come through loud and clear from the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on now to approval of the consent agenda. There were no items in the table file dealing with any personnel items. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? I won't go through the roll call, but we'll pause for a moment if anyone would like to pull anything from the consent grouping. Okay, not hearing anyone. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Second.
Moved by Jeff, second by Rob. Again, I will, there, we will go, no comments on the consent grouping. So we will now conduct a roll call vote. Anita?
Braniac.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Cornell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. The consent grouping has been approved. We will now move on to items for individual action. Our first item is the Longfellow renovation bid approval. And we thank Josh Cooper from Canute's Construction for being here this evening. Because this is an item for individual action, I will ask for a motion and a second, and then we will have the opportunity for board members to ask questions either of Dr. Hillman or Josh Cooper. So is there a motion to allow contracts to be issued to the bidders presented for Longfellow renovation at a cost of $1,043,754 as well as approval for the general conditions fee of $187,484, construction contingency of $15,000, the special inspections and testing for WSB for $2,570, and the commissioning agent for Dunham for $6,500 as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Excellent. We will move on now for questions or comments. Again, I will go through board members alphabetically. Tom, do you have any questions or comments on the Longfellow renovation bid approval?
Nope, thanks.
Okay, Amy.
No comments, no questions.
Thank you. Rob.
Nope, no questions.
Okay, Ellen.
No questions.
Jeff.
No questions.
Okay, Noel.
No comments, no questions.
Okay, and I have no questions or comments. Josh Cooper, you were good enough to come on to the, the video conference. Were there any comments you wanted to make regarding the Longfellow renovation bid approval? I was part of the bid opening process. It went very smoothly and we're excited that, I believe, Josh, did we come in under the bid or right at the bid, projected bid?
We were just under $60,000, so basically on, on budget right there. So it was definitely a unique process. That, that's one, a first one for me is for a bid reading through Zoom. So congratulations. But it went great. We got a number of bids, multiple bids in each category. So I was a little nervous, but it went very well. I was very happy with it. So thank you for your approvals tonight.
Okay, excellent. And I think if we review the score, we are four for five and coming in under budget, correct?
Yeah, that is.
On or under budget? So excellent. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We will go through roll call vote. Anita?
Braniac.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Cornell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Excellent. Motion carries. We have the Longfellow renovation bid approval. Our second item for individual action is the proposed 2020, 2021 budget, all funds. This is an item for individual action and Val Murdestorff is here as well this evening for questions. So let's begin with a motion to approve the proposed 2020, 2021 budgets as presented for all funds. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Thank you. Questions, comments? I know, Val, you had some items you wanted to discuss. So why don't we have you do the presentation that you had wanted to make and the remarks, and then we can open it up for board members' questions and comments.
Sure. Good evening.
Excellent. Thanks, Val.
Yep, you're very welcome. So the budget, as you know, is a set of assumptions about our future spending based on information we know at the time. So all of these budgets were presented in February and March prior to the rapidly changing COVID-19 pandemic. So we know the pandemic and the measures that the state and federal government are taking will have a financial impact on the district, which we've referenced, but I wanted to go into just a little bit more detail. I referenced it in a, at a high level in my budget book. But just wanted to give you a, a frame for what the district is doing to, you know, respond and manage and be as proactive as we can. So the financial implications, just to give you a sense of some of the things that we're looking at and considering. We do, as Dr. Hillman referenced, have some things that we're gaining where we either are hopefully expecting a little bit of additional revenue. Those are very few and far between. Or we're actually just reducing our expenditures in some way. But we also have several losses where we're either losing a revenue source or incurring additional expenditures that weren't originally anticipated. So just to give you a frame for some of those things on our gains column, I have a spreadsheet where I'm tracking all of these. So that's kind of where I'm referencing right now. Obviously, we are no longer paying sub-costs for the remainder of the, the distance learning period. So that is an expenditure that we're saving on, that we had budgeted for. Extracurricular transportation is one that Dr. Hillman had referenced. We are expecting a pretty, hopefully significant reduction in our utility costs. Our buildings are still open and being used in some capacity, but not nearly, not nearly what they are when they're in full swing. So reduction in classroom supply purchases, obviously, distance learning looks very different when students are not present in the classroom. Activities, so with no spring sports currently, we don't have to pay officials or game workers, those sorts of things. Reduced copier charges. We, we do believe we'll get some federal funding, but there has been no guidance that I'm aware of about how much or when we will receive it or what kind of strings that they will attach to it. As is their typical protocol. Some of the losses that we're considering are things like our third-party billing. So our MA revenue, we can bill for services that we provide to students and DHS reimburses us. That, I mean, we're, we're anticipating missing a quarter of the year at this point, which could be upwards of $60,000. We will likely be refunding all of our activity, spring participation fees. We have not yet, just because the state high school league has not formally canceled spring sports, but we are anticipating that that's something we will do probably sooner rather than later. As well as any activity ticket revenue for any events we would be hosting. Investment earnings is a pretty big unknown at this point due to the economy. Facility rental income. We are not renting out any of our facilities. And then the, the biggest ones that we're really watching are the emergency childcare. So typically childcare is run through our community services fund. But due to the fact that this is a state-mandated program that we cannot charge revenue for, there's no way for the community services fund to actually absorb all of that cost. The state has come out with guidance that talks about doing fund balance transfers and that sort of thing to help offset the cost, and they make it sound really positive for districts. And I would say that from my perspective and the guidance that I've read, it is not all that positive for our district. I think we're in a slightly different scenario because of the fact that we were running a licensed daycare. We already had multiple staff who are well-trained in how to run a childcare. We had a robust school-age care program. And so several districts are able to just completely run that with their educational assistance. But we are paying our staff their regularly scheduled hours. And we have a significant number of community services staff who are full-time, regular employees doing that already. So it was slightly different for our district. And there was no revenue coming in. There's just no way that the, the general fund won't have to help offset those costs. And the only fund balance transfers at the current time that I see really being able to apply to our district based on the current guidance is our long-term facility maintenance and our operating capital and our teacher development and evaluation, which all have their own strings and problems attached to them if we choose to use those sources. So those are just a handful of the kind of current expenditures and revenues and things that we're looking at. There are certainly other things with community services and not running any kind of programming and uncertainty about summer programming that we're looking at. But those are just some high-level things. And then there are also quite a few long-term implications that we're considering. Again, these are things that we will have to kind of just wait and see. Most of this is kind of wait and see. But things like, are we going to have an increase in delinquent taxes and have a higher abatement on our property tax levy due to people being unable to pay their, their property taxes? We've actually had communication from two of our three counties about potential delays in our tax payments because they're allowing for some, or considering allowing for additional leeway for, for people to pay their taxes. That's a significant cash flow piece for us. I would anticipate we would still get all the revenue. But we get twenty, I mean, 25% of our budget is levy. So if we are delaying those payments that we get, that's a, a big consideration for us. Increases to unemployment insurance and what the, the long-term ramifications of that would be for the district. Also have some concerns about our self-insured health insurance. We know that hospitals and clinics are struggling and does that result in higher increases in premiums and things in the future? Just increasing our spend trend. We're also likely projecting getting no future money from the state on the basic formula. And assuming that they'll probably switch back to a strategy of delaying our cash payments. Like right now, we get about 90% of all of our expected aid in the current year. And then the other 10% is they finalize it in the following school year. Back in 2010, they were down to about 73, 27, I believe, was the lowest that they had gone in that. Again, we end up getting all of the revenue, but not as the expenditures are going out the door. So again, that's a cash flow thing. If we had really solid fund balance at the time and didn't have to cash flow, borrow or pay interest or do those things, but again, we're in a, in a different situation today than we were then. So those are some high-level, fairly specific things that we're thinking about. In addition to that, we've also done some purchasing restrictions, which Matt referenced. We basically froze all of our discretionary building and program budgets and said, there's a process. If you feel that the expenditure supports distance learning or is, is needed to continue the district moving forward, we're absolutely approving those things. But really as a mechanism for people to stop and really think about whether or not they need the, the purchase. Just because everything is completely different right now, I just wanted to make sure we had some way to slow the spending, if we can make any kind of dent for, for what our future budget looks like. We're also doing things like switching our garbage pickup schedule to our summer schedule because the dumpsters are not being filled up as fast as they were. So we're looking at anything and everything we can to really reduce expenditures where we can to make any kind of difference. In addition to that, we are, as many of you know, we've used schoolfinances.com and their financial modeling tools for several years, pretty much since I've been in this position. They were bought out by Forecast Five, which is a nationwide company that provides a pretty robust data analytics software. We got set up on that actually just last week. Got trained on it last week. And they've honestly already put a COVID-19 planning worksheet in our database and have done a couple of different webinars and really proved to be very helpful in helping us think through some different things. And we'll be able to use this software to, to really run some comparative scenarios for what our future planning looks like. So those, that is coming hopefully sooner rather than later. But the, the list that I went through, there's a lot of different components to think about and to try and figure out what the, what the correct costing assumptions will be and how to, how to plan for the loss of revenue or an increased expenditure. So the budget document is pretty much as presented with the exception of the items I listed in the narrative. So GAZB eighty-four required the Student Activity Fund and our Scholarship Fund to become part of the general fund. So in the, in all of my planning to get all the budgets together, I completely neglected to include them. So those are in and outs. They have their own restricted fund balances. The scholarships have been really stable for the last several years. So we're not expecting any major changes in that. And the student activities have actually never had a budget. It's been in its kind of own little world. So that is based on just historical spending and revenues that we've seen with that fund. So again, it doesn't impact the unassigned fund balance percentage at all or anything like that. It's its own kind of bucket. So just wanted to call that out that I did add those because that is a statutory requirement that we approve a budget by June 30th. So I wanted to make sure we were capturing all of those pieces. And again, I put in my notes, but we, we know that the budget's going to look different next year. We just don't know how. But we're working on that. But we are required by June 30th to have a budget in place. So it's a starting place. And hopefully we'll have some scenarios and some more concrete information in the coming weeks and months to know where we're going. So I would welcome any questions that, that you have about the budget book, about the COVID-19, about anything else.
Excellent. Thank you, Val. Okay, we will move through board members alphabetically for any questions or comments. Tom.
I think, you know, it's going to be one, you, you deal with one thing, solve that problem, you move on to the next one. We got a national election coming up. Things could change there. And I think Things could change there. And I think it's just um, we do what we need to do to solve the problems we're facing now. And then we'll find out what the, the new circumstances are down the road and um the, whatever help we can get. Um, I, and you know, as you point out, we're, we're not alone in this. Um, it's, I think there'll, there'll be help coming. Um, so thanks for all the uh, thanks for staying on top of that. Um, I think we'll, we'll be fine. There is just one little typo that I, I noticed on page five in your uh, your report. Um, it says that on April twenty-seventh, the budget board adopted the, the um necessary resolutions. I don't think we quite, we did that quite yet. Um, I think
But you will be.
Yeah, that's right. So
I will, I can adjust that, yes.
Otherwise, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Amy.
I have no questions, but I just want to let Val know that I have such confidence in her abilities to see us through this uh unprecedented time uh with our budget. And I know, I, I just am very happy that she's part of our team and um she'll be uh helping us through this all and making sure that our money situation is as positive as it can be. And I just want to wish you all uh wish you bow as well, the best in the next few weeks ahead, because I know you have a lot of big things happening in your life too.
Thank you.
Rob.
Yeah, um. I also want to say thanks to Val. I feel like as these things are happening that I feel confident having you looking, you know, being in charge of these things and I was just wondering about special education. You mentioned the MA billing. I mean, especially with I, I mean, this is maybe a more general question, just with all of the IEPs and all of the that's really one of the most intensive hands-on kind of work that the school district does. And it's completely different, obviously, uh at this, at a distance, as, as distance learning. Um. So I'm wondering how you fill out all of the, you know, do all the paperwork for that is required and, and do the billing properly for something so complicated even in normal times.
Um, so the, the MA billing specifically um is actually like our nurses providing medications to students or doing s- specific health services types of things. And so we're just unable to bill for them. They are looking into getting some kind of certification that would allows a telemedicine type um allowance, but um again, I don't know where we're at with that. And I would suspect that the process to actually get that implemented is gonna take longer than, than would actually help our budget. Um, but it is, um, that is one piece of the special ed funding and quite frankly, one of, thankfully, one of the smaller ones. Um, again, fifty-six thousand dollars is um, is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things is manageable. Um, the, the rest of the special ed funding, uh our current understanding and guidance that we've received is that it will continue as is. We're still coding all of our teachers and our educational assistants to special ed and have received a waiver um so that if they're helping gen ed students instead of special ed students, they're they know that this is going to be a different environment and they've allowed us to continue that. Um, same thing with our special ed transportation, which is a really big piece of our formula. Um, that is one of the pieces we're still paying to Benjamin Bus because they're still paying their drivers. So we're still coding that and generating that revenue. Um, even though that, that actual transportation isn't happening. So they, they have made quite a few flexible decisions, I guess, to help maintain that revenue as much as possible. I would say my bigger concern right now at this point is there's been no discussion about um any kind of maintenance of effort waiver. There are things that we're just not, not buying and not able to code. The, the vast majority of special ed is staffing. And so we're still paying our staff. Um. But there, there hasn't been any kind of conversation at um the federal level about that just yet that we're aware of. So overall, it definitely looks different. Um, I know special ed has been working really hard to um meet students where they're at and accommodate them in in lots of new ways. Um, but funding wise, um, the guidance we've received is that we can kind of keep going status quo as, as much as possible, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Dr. Hardy, we are conducting, we, I know we conducted some of our first IEP meetings via Zoom uh recently and staff are working on the digital paper flow. And we are providing services to special education students again through a variety of different methods. So special education services overall are continuing, the IEP process are, are continuing. There are some special guidance on how to handle amendments uh to an IEP to uh support the distance learning process. So most of those things are continuing uh in the regular direction in just a little bit of a different way.
Uh, can I just ask how that's also working out with SubSec with their students who are students there?
Yeah, so SubSec is a separate organization, as you all know, as a former board member for SubSec. They have a distance learning plan as well, which they are working to meet the needs of those students. I will tell you, based on listening in on the superintendent calls with the commissioner, the settings like SubSec, and I've not heard this specifically from our cooperative, but we know those setting for students, uh we know that the ability to serve those students has become very difficult when they're not getting their regular services in a place that they're no, they're used to going to. So we know that those cooperatives, special education cooperatives serving setting for students have a unique set of challenges, but we did have a meeting with Lynn Kreminger and SubSec last week. And they are implementing a distance learning plan and doing the best that they are able to with the students in their programs.
Thank you.
Ellen.
Yes, thanks, Val. Um, it was, it's one thing that's really good is that because you were on, had us on this earlier schedule and rolling out all the budgets is that we have this sort of at least a baseline of what we thought the world was going to look like to compare to. Um, my question is, um, on page nine, you just said, you know, we'll do our best to keep the board in, you know, in, in the community and employees up to date. Are there strategies that um, that you think might be useful? Um, you're looking at the modeling software, other sort of thresholds or how frequent? Um, I mean, we, we meet, you know, we have our board meetings, but are there other sort of thresholds that you're looking at in terms of keeping us abreast of sort of the changing dynamics? And, and as I was really um um helpful to have all the details, including just when the garbage is getting picked up. You were, you know, in note, 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 uh, stone is being unturned. We can, we can see that. But I just wondered if, if you have some sort of guiding principles that you're sort of thinking about moving forward on.
Um, well, I would say um the, we, we like to talk about just one hour at a time with our Advent team because of the the rapidly changing, we get communication and guidance and the federal guidance conflicts with the state guidance and then they issue new guidance. So I would say um the, the Forecast Five has been um, again, and I'm a week into it and very impressed with it so far because there are several districts in Minnesota that are utilizing it. And so it's, we're able to, um, we have a dedicated representative that I can reach out to. And they can talk about what they've seen in other districts, kind of the things that they're looking at projecting and why or how they did it. Um, a lot of it is really just dependent on the guidance that we're getting. So they issued um, the CARES Act with the, this federal stimulus money two, two weeks ago now at least. And we haven't heard anything about how much we might be getting or what we can use it for. Um. And so I would say a- as soon as I know things and feel comfortable that I understand them, I'm more than willing to share them. Um, I would anticipate some kind of update at each board meeting at a minimum. Even if my update is to say we didn't get any new information and my assumptions from last time are the same. Um, I have a pretty good sense of the different things that we need to look at how to cost. It's just a matter of finding the time to meet with the people and the budgets. Um, you know, the people who manage those budgets and know them in more detail than I do to make sure that I'm getting the complete picture. Um. And again, my, my timeline is gonna be challenged here shortly. Um, but I still, this is extremely important for the district. And so I, I intend to keep working on it and make sure that we have the best information we have. So um, I would say at a minimum, every board meeting. Um, certainly I've shared things out with our staff. Um. The, the purchasing restriction document went out last week um on Friday, and I actually included my budget document and are just kind of keeping them up to date as, as we get information as well. Um, so really I would say I don't, I don't have a formal, a formal thing because I feel like we get new guidance daily and weekly. And so really I would say if there's something major, we would let you know right away. But otherwise, I would say at a minimum, every board meeting, we would have some kind of update about what we're doing or what we think um is gonna happen moving forward.
And one of the really exciting things, Dr. Iverson, about Forecast Five is the ability for us to build dashboards based on certain criteria. Uh, Val has always built dashboards for us in Excel. Uh, but these are items that we can have right on our login screen. And so as we look at what are, as you always know, we look at financial indicators in a number of different ways. And so as we look at the ones that we think are the uh key telltale data points, we will build a uh dashboard that will give us real-time information uh based upon the information that's in the system. So the Forecast Five system is really advanced. And for those of us who like this kind of thing, we're kind of geeking out and having a lot of fun with it, but it is going to give us uh some, some much better and less manual kinds of uh reporting than when we, we would have had to do pretty laboriously in the past.
That's really helpful. Thanks.
Yep.
Ellen, Jeff, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd say, Val, thanks for your reports and your hard work and to uh Dr. Hillman and, and all staff. I just think this, this whole process is just kind of a every two week and it, uh, it'll take a while for everyone to get on the same page, but to keep our focus on helping our staff and students and keeping our uh uh people just kind of calm, you know, and, and being good leaders and trying to figure out uh how we're gonna end the year strong. And then what, you know, potentially what next year looks like too. So um anyway, just one day at a time and we come back every two weeks and we can just get the update and keep moving forward. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jeff. Noel, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to comment, express my appreciation for the work, the professionalism that Val brings to the district and handling the financials of it. And particularly the intuitiveness that she has for being able to find where to look and what to expect when she does look. Uh, we are blessed. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Okay, yes, thanks, Val. I mean, you, you're meticulous attention to detail and your proactive stance and all those things that we so value about you are pretty much in hyperdrive right now. And we appreciate that. Um, you know, again, there's no playbook for, for all the things that are happening. And as a board, we appreciated the the broad view of the, some of the far-reaching financial implications that COVID nineteen will be for the district. Um, and we can't uh uh leave this conversation without wishing you well um in the coming weeks, as Amy said, and we will be very excited to hear the news that uh baby born baby boy Murdistorf has arrived. So thank you for all your work. Thank you for I know that you are so graciously and so generously and your commitment to the district and to your work being willing to look at and, and to work towards uh and, and to keep this top of mind or not top of mind. You have other things that will be top of mind, but but being able to uh keep a handle on what's happening in the coming weeks for the district. And we look forward to welcoming you back.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm very excited and impatient to announce baby Murdistorf has arrived.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the proposed, for the approval of the proposed twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget as presented. So we will do a roll call vote for approval of that budget. Anita?
Rania.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Quinell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Excellent. Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is the renaming of the existing Greenville Park. As you know, we did discuss that, um, which seems like quite a long time ago when life hadn't uh turned upside down. And we understood at the time the results of the survey that um Erin Bailey worked um very diligently in getting out to all stakeholders. And we do have a, a motion um to approve the Northfield Committee to approve the naming of the current Greenville Park Elementary School to the Northfield Communic- Community Education Center. So do I have a motion?
I'd move it, Noel.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I will go through in alphabetical order. Any questions or comments board members have regarding the name uh renaming of the existing Greenville Park to Northfield Community Education Center? Tom.
No.
Amy.
Pass.
Rob.
Uh, no comments. I think it's a good name.
Excellent. Ellen.
No comments or questions.
Jeff.
No comments or questions.
Noel.
No comments, no questions.
Okay, excellent. Uh, so we have a motion and a second, and uh we will have Anita do a roll call vote.
Rania.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Quinell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Excellent. Motion carries. So the name of the new uh building will be Northfield Community Education Center. Not the new building, I'm sorry, the, the renovated current Greenville Park Elementary School. So thanks again to Erin Bailey and the team of initially for um uh the proposal to, to uh go forward with community education um as, as the name um going forward. And then um your work on helping the community to uh come up with the name for the renovated building. So excellent. Um, our next item for individual action is approval of policies. Again, the first reading of these policies were presented at our March nine, twenty-twenty board meeting. Um, and as a result of the work by our policy committee, so is there a motion to approve the changes to policies as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Thank you. Again, we will go through uh and ask for any comments or questions board members have on the approval of the policies as presented. Tom.
Nope, pass.
Amy.
No questions.
Rob.
Pass.
Ellen.
No questions.
Jeff.
No questions.
Noel.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we will proceed with a roll call vote. Anita?
Rania.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Quinell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our last item for individual action would be notice to hold teleconference meetings pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh two. So I'll, I'll ask for a motion and then we'll have opportunity for questions. Is there a motion to approve all future meetings of the Northfield Public School, Schools Board of Education will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point zero-two-one meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice?
Motion.
Moved by Tom. Oh, I'm sorry, moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second
Seconded by Amy.
Seconded by Amy. So it was moved by Jeff and seconded by Amy. So we'll again run through the list for any board members' questions or comments. Tom?
Uh, pass.
Amy?
Pass.
Rob?
Um, I just have a question about, it says due to the current federal and state emergency declarations. I'm just wondering, um, what this, what the time length is governed by because the uh, this, the emergency declaration extends to a certain point, the stay at home order extends to a certain point. We've got federal and state, you know, competing timelines. So I'm just wondering how, how do you determine when this period ends?
So, Dr. Hardy, I think that, uh, based upon this resolution or this, this vote, we would be able to conduct these meetings via video conference or, you know, teleconference or other electronic means until further notice. So if at a point where the stay at home order is lifted and we feel it's safe enough for us all to be back in the same room together, we simply need to give the, the notice that we would normally give for a board meeting. So uh, making sure that the meeting is posted seventy-two hours in advance with the location. My understanding is that that's all that we need to do. It doesn't mean that we have to do everyone via teleconference. It, but it just notifies that it is a likelihood that we will.
So we, the district can determine rather than the state determining when, when we decide to go back to in person?
Based on my understanding, as long as the state restrictions have been lifted, we then have the ability. But as you know, it, different parts of the state, there could be different conditions. So, uh, even after the executive order to shelter in place is lifted, it's a possibility that in some counties or jurisdictions, they may choose to continue uh, with teleconference or other electronic means at that point. And so I think the other key thing is we will still be following all of the seventy-two hour notification protocols, notifying where and when the board meeting will be held.
Okay, thanks.
Ellen, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Noel?
I think I understand the motion. I'm hoping that it implies then that the board chair and the superintendent can decide when we will, you know, what, what method we'll use of communication. Would that be correct?
I think it is Noel. As long as there's no, no other, um, legal, legal component above us that would say that we could not.
Yeah, as long as you're within the guidelines.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, no, no other questions.
Just one comment on that as well. Um, the Minnesota School Board Association is holding a webinar for uh, board chairs and superintendents on Thursday around this specific topic. So we may learn more. Um, the language as it, as it stands does indicate that school board chair and school district leadership can determine, um, when they, they, um, are, feel that it's, uh, appropriate for board members and public to convene in the regular meeting location. And then we have this, um, resolution to, um, meet, uh, other means if necessary. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We will conduct a roll call vote. Anita?
Rania.
Hi.
Gerwitz.
Hi.
Hardy.
Hi.
Iverson.
Hi.
Pritchard.
Hi.
Quinell.
Hi.
Stratmon.
Hi.
Excellent. Motion carries. So that ta- uh, is the last of our items for individual action. So we will move on now to items for information. We have the enrollment report. Dr. Hillman?
And I'm gonna share the enrollment report on your screen right now. So what you will see is that we went up slightly, uh, from last month to, uh, thirty-nine eighty-four. Uh, some of the things that can account for that, you'll see that Sibley picked up four students. We know that we, you might say, well, on April first, that seems a little odd because, you know, we've gone to distance learning. We have had some students, uh, who are with parents overseas, uh, either through some kind of college appointment or, uh, some other overseas uh, um, experience that they were planning to have for the entire year. And obviously with the COVID-19 situation, families have returned. So that accounts for the very small increase that we've had over the last month.
Thank you, Dr. Hillman. We'll ask now, um, I will, um, ask board members if they have any questions or comments on the enrollment report. Tom?
Um, yeah, so are we seeing any decreases? Are, um, like maybe in the, the high school level?
So what we've seen right now is that we did go down, uh, six students in the last month at the high school level. Now, uh, some of that could be a transfer to the ALC. As I'm looking at those numbers, we actually did have six, a six student departure from the high school and a six person increase at the area learning center. And while, uh, that may not be a complete one-to-one analogy, uh, the fact is that we saw a decrease at the high school of six students and an increase at the ALC, which is not totally uncommon this time of year.
Um, okay, I guess I was wondering with the, um, uh, doing schooling at home, if the older students would be less likely to finish out or I, I guess maybe go to ALC, but.
So I think one of the key things is that our high school multi-tiered systems of support team. So that includes counselors, it includes administrators, it includes other members of the student support team. Every Friday, uh, they have a standing meeting during distance learning where they are going through every single, uh, their, every, any, every, any teacher can make a referral to that group. And they are going through every single student that they have a concern about. They divide them out amongst the team. They're reaching out via phone. If they're not able to reach them via phone, they are actually uh, working with some other, uh, partners to do a, a well child check, if you will. The check, is everybody okay? Uh, so it is possible that we can see some students who, who would choose not to finish. However, we have a team that's working very hard to ensure that that doesn't happen and meeting the needs of students where they're at to try to make sure we get especially our seniors over the finish line here in a month or so.
Great, thank you.
Amy?
I have a question, but I'm trying to decide whether it's really relevant. After, after seeing that we did go up by five students, it made me wonder if someone does come back into town or somehow ends up changing from homeschool to being enrolled in school. How do they do it at this point? Are they, um, able to get ahold of someone at the school to make that happen?
Yes, they are. So anyone who's a district resident, of course, all of the, we've had all of the forms, uh, for, um, for enrollment on our website for years. Uh, Chris Nesset and Anita, uh, usually take those, uh, calls and or forms. And I'm, I'm receiving forms even we're, we still have some open enrollment things that are starting up for, you know, some people finishing this year. So a family in the community who moved to another district but wants to make sure they maintain their enrollment in the district. We have all of that work happening electronically. We do usually have at least someone in the district office every day. We have a rotating schedule for our district office staff members to work at least one day a week in the office because there are some things that they need to complete their job. So for example, our payroll person is in, uh, has been on-site the last couple of days because a payroll is coming up. So we have people who could accept the documentation if needed, but we're really trying to do everything electronically, Amy.
Thank you.
Rob?
So the early childhood is, early childhood special education students only?
Correct.
Okay. And those are receiving distance learning just like everybody else?
They are, yes.
Okay.
And in fact, it's a, one of the heartwarming stories is one of our early childhood special education teachers, uh, upon the announcement of the closure, so this is back on March seventeenth, delivered materials to every one of his students' homes, put them on the front doorstep, rang the doorbell with a note saying, don't worry about this right now, but you'll need this in a couple of weeks when we start distance learning. So, uh, you would be, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised at the work that's happening at the early childhood level, not just with our early childhood special education. But we have early childhood family education groups that are meeting via Zoom to support each other. And of course, for young families who are staying at home a- all of the time, I think that's a very welcome outlet for them. So there's, there are some, uh, areas where you might say, well, how would that work? That we are, we are all taking advantage of the experiment that we have at this point of how do we deliver those services remotely? It is of course not the same, right? But we are doing everything that we can to try to continue that continuum of services to the best of our ability.
Thanks.
Ellen?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Noel?
No questions.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item for information, which is construction update number twenty-four. Dr. Hillman?
Yeah, so we just have a very brief construction update. As you, uh, know, we just approved the, uh, bids for Longfellow renovation. As I mentioned, you know, right now, all of the other projects are on, uh, they are on schedule at this point. One of the things that we are looking at is, uh, should the governor determine that we are not coming back on-site during the school year, which, you know, we have heard the governor not so subtly say at a couple of press conferences where, you know, he has said he thinks it's a very slim chance of us returning to school facilities this year. We are creating contingency plans to, uh, get the current Greenville Park, uh, building packed so that that renovation, if, if possible, could start earlier than planned. So while we all wish we were together in person, that's what we would always prefer. Uh, we are trying to look at what are the things that we can do because we have this circumstance. So that is something that we're trying to get ahead of. Because of course, that Greenville Park renovation is the tightest timeline that we have. So right now, all of the other projects are on schedule. Uh, the Longfellow bid was open tonight. That's one, we do have a little bit of concern about the materials arriving on time, but because it's the renovation of the first floor for district offices and the lower floor for a boardroom, if that were to be delayed of all the projects, it wouldn't be the end of the world for us. So we're in about as good of a condition as we can be. Uh, you'll see that we are going to be, uh, we, we've made the furniture order. Uh, we also have a simulated walkthrough of the new Greenville Park Elementary School. So that's more of an HDTV kind of walkthrough. That's linked in your document. And then something we'll be posting this week is Canute's in Construction did a very unique, well, something can't be very unique, but they did a very, they did a unique, uh, they took hundreds and hundreds of pictures inside of the facility. And what they did is they stitched that together. So it's like a Google Street View. So when you click on the link, you're actually able to say, oh, I would like to, you can point your cursor. I want to go look over behind that, uh, wall. You can move through the building like that and we'll be, we're just finalizing, getting that ready. That should be posted to the construction site this week. It is, it's actually mind boggling how awesome it is. And I know I did share this with some of you beforehand and I did try to see if I could make it work through a screen share and it just, we didn't want to tempt fate with Zoom this evening. It's been working fairly well. And, uh, it's a pretty intensive computer process that it takes to create those images. So we will send the link out once we get it posted. And that's our construction update.
Excellent. Let's move through the list quickly in case, uh, board members have questions or comments. Uh, Tom, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Matt, I noticed that the parking on Lincoln Parkway is now the construction workers are parking on the south side of the road. Were, were they getting complaints that with all the vehicles parked on the north side of the road, it was hard to see oncoming traffic if you're turning, making a, making a turn along there?
Tom, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I will find out for you though.
Well, uh, no, it's okay. I mean, I just, I just noticed and it seemed, uh, the logical thing, but.
The only other thing that I can surm- you know, speculate, Tom, is that, um, I'm trying to think of they are starting to get other kinds of materials coming in. So it might be that they're moving them to the other side of the road so that there's a, less competition for those, uh, vehicles to turn into the site.
Yeah, that, that, okay, thanks.
Amy?
Just one question. I'm wondering if by some miracle, the materials come in for Longfellow early, can they actually start the renovation early?
So, uh, the possibility would exist. Uh, it, it, remember this one's a domino effect. We have to get the items out of the current Greenville Park building. And, uh, and then theoretically, we could also get the items out of the current Longfellow building as well. The only catch there is that we still are providing some childcare and early ventures for existing customers who have, uh, children ages birth through five. So we are still providing some service in that building. Uh, so that could be, uh, an issue with doing any kind of acceleration of the Longfellow process.
Thank you. Rob?
Well, this is kind of tangential, I suppose, but I noticed the rock house up on its um, trailer, I guess. And I'm just wondering if you have an update on the construction of the roundabout and that? Cause there's a lot of work going on there too.
Yeah, so the, the rock house was, uh, taken off of its foundation maybe ten days ago, a couple of weeks ago now. And what's been waiting is the, uh, the company that purchased the rock house from us, their house movers, um, Adi's, their name is, Adi's House Movers. And they were waiting for the road restrictions to be re- relieved, uh, really, or removed, uh, this spring so that they could transport the house. So it's ready to go. Uh, our understanding is that they will be doing that Wednesday night of this week. They would have done it earlier, but we had a nice, uh, April snowstorm that prevented that. So you can anticipate that being moved uh, by Wednesday, Wednesday evening. Gleason, uh, they, they have been in, uh, the Gleason Company has been in help with some of the site work for us. So you know, there, there was a, there were some old infrastructure kinds of things that were associated with, with the house. Um, old septic tank, they've been removing those and are creating, uh, getting all of that stuff out that would need to be taken care of for the roundabout. We know that they are preparing, uh, to do some work in the ditches. They've already started some of that with some of the utility movement. There's quite a bit of utilities that need to be moved, uh, prior to the construction. And we do know that, uh, the city, uh, is ready to go. And should we hear that we are not back for the remainder of the school year, if the governor were to deliver that, uh, decision, I, I believe they would be ready to start moving on that very quickly.
Thanks.
Ellen?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Noel?
No questions.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh, so our last item for information, this was in the table file, the exciting news about the Kaboom Playground Equipment. Dr. Hillman?
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask Director of Community Education, Erin Bailey, to just walk us through the Kaboom, uh, Playground Equipment Grant that we've gotten. We're not asking you for any a decision on this, to any kind of, uh, action on this, this evening. You will take action on accepting the, uh, grant or accepting that donation later in the process. But we wanted to make you aware of it because there is some paperwork that I will need to sign to keep this process moving forward. So I'm gonna have, uh, Director Bailey to share a few things with you. And then should there be any objection to us moving forward, we'd like to know that. I think when you get three hundred thousand dollars worth of free playground equipment, uh, that is pretty awesome. I, I think it's worth it for us to move forward. Uh, but we just really got some of these details ironed out last Friday. So Erin, are you able to share just a little bit about the Kaboom Playground with us, please?
Certainly. Um, so this exciting Kaboom Playground Equipment opportunity is, um, part of a grant that H, the Healthy Community Initiative wrote to, to Kaboom, Kaboom. It's a community playground grant. It was originally, um, written with the idea to be awarded to the city of Northfield, um, to be located uh, somewhere in the, kind of in the area around, uh, Northfield Estates or, um, Florrella's Playground or Florrella's, um, Mobile Home Park. The city would have had to have purchased land to, uh, be able to install a playground in that area and, um, voted to not make a land purchase. We had always been the second, call it the second choice if that land purchase did not happen. And so we did learn, um, a couple of weeks ago that we would be receiving the Kaboom Playground Equipment for location at the, what will now be the Northfield Community Education Center, which is very exciting. Uh, part of this process will be a, uh, which we have done some because we had started down this, um, path to, to finalize our playground, which will be soliciting feedback from staff and from families. And we'll build off of what we've currently done. There is a community build day, which HCI will help us with securing, um, what that looks like in, if this pandemic continues and, and, but also is helping us secure, um, volunteers for that day. It is about three hundred thousand dollars worth of playground equipment. There is a, um, about an eighty-five hundred dollar match that Northfield Shares has agreed to pay on behalf of the Northfield Public Schools. So overall, a very exciting project. The, they, um, as part of the grant, the equipment needs to be installed by August thirtieth, which obviously matches our timeline very well.
So we just wanted to make sure that board members were aware of this really exciting development. Uh, at this point, there is no financial commitment of the district, but there are some things that I will be signing for the school district, you know, on your behalf, just to keep this process moving forward. And again, there will be a, a donation. It'll be the gift. And again, there will be a donation. It'll be the gift agreement that you normally do that we will accept at a future board meeting.
Excellent. Let's ask board members if they have any questions or comments on the Kaboom Playground Equipment Grant. Tom.
Um, yeah, so what is Kaboom? Is that, I was just looking at the website and it talks about equity. Is there something unique and special about Kaboom?
Um, so I, the grant that we received, Tom, they are looking, they, they were specifically written for playgrounds in what they call might be playground deserts is how they refer to in the areas that have, that are short on playground, which is why it has been focused on kind of the north end of town. And so that, that was kind of how the land, where the, the land that they wanted to originally put that grant was decided upon with feeling that where we were located would always be a good option to, just knowing that that part of Northfield has substantially less playground equipment than some of the other areas of Northfield. Kaboom works in this, this space providing playground equipment and then obviously offers, in addition to these community grants, they offer different grant opportunities for communities as well.
Great, thanks.
Amy.
Yes, I have two questions. First, what age range children will the playground equipment be for? And also, the second question is sort of where do you think it's going to be placed on the property?
Sure. So we, based on the kids that we have in the building, we will have playground, we are required to have playground equipment that is for ages six months to twenty-three months. And then we will also have playground equipment that we can have that is either two to age, age two to age five or age two to age twelve. We'll likely go with two to twelve just because it can serve broader than just who's at, it is, meets the requirements for everyone at our building, but then also can be for others that are older than our building to access on off hours as well. And so there'll be those, we'll have two different sets. They, and we will have a fence around there because we will be required to have a fence around it for the age of children that we have. But again, it can be much like Longfellow currently is, which allows access for other members of the community as well. It will be likely be located right where the current playground equipment is located. We have a company coming in, while they were scheduled to come in on June ninth or tenth, we'll see that. Will they reclaim and reuse the equipment that is there? So that's a company out of Canada that was coming in to take out the equipment. And then we would look at placing the new equipment in, in roughly the same location.
Does the old equipment go over to the, the new Greenville Park Elementary School?
It, it will not. There are some, some liability issues about moving playground equipment. So this company out of Canada does, they, I'm not sure what work they do for it, but they are willing to come and bear the costs of taking it out. But we will, we will not be moving the equipment to the new Greenville Park.
And Amy, we do have, we are putting a new playground along with the new Greenville Park building. So the new building is getting a new playground as well, and that's coming from district monies.
Why would we rip out the old playground? Couldn't we have both the, the old playground and the new Kaboom Playground by the Greenville, the old Greenville Park?
So we just don't have the real estate to do that, Amy. In addition, the current playground that's at the current Greenville Park does not meet the requirements for the younger children who will be now inhabiting that building. So the, what we looked at is what is the best way, we already know we have a very tight space at that location. So we determined that the best strategy was to have this company from Canada come in to reclaim the existing playground. And especially when we're getting this pretty awesome three hundred, we wouldn't have spent three hundred thousand dollars of district money on this playground. So we're going to get a pretty awesome play space for nothing in this case. And we are investing a substantial amount, a little more than a hundred thousand dollars value, I think, at the new elementary school.
Thank you. Rob, do you have any questions?
No questions, just a trivia fact that Kaboom features in season two, episode six of Parks and Recreation.
I should have known that, Rob. Thanks for sharing.
Excellent, thank you. Ellen.
No questions.
Jeff.
Yeah, it's just a great opportunity and great timing to be blessed with three hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. And I was there the first day in fourth grade when that playground opened up when Greenville started. So this is going to be a new era with the state of the art equipment. So looking forward to it.
Noel.
Noel, well, we, we need, we should celebrate the, the good fortune that we have and recognize the people for the great work they're doing and writing the grant to get it to us. We appreciate that.
Yes, and we thank HCI. They've done a lot of the work, they've done the work to secure.
The works.
So of course, Zach Pruitt, who does not ever like his name mentioned out loud. We all know the wonderful work that Zach does. And he is, of course, the chief architect of helping us get this grant.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, several times throughout the evening, we've been reminded of the strength of our community partnerships. When we look at HCI stepping up to provide the funds for the, for the wifi access for some of our students who needed it and Northfield Shares who's doing the, the required donate, or the required additional grant dollars needed for the Kaboom Grant. You know, and HCI, the heavy lift that they did to secure, I agree Noel, three hundred thousand dollars in playground equipment is, is significant. And, and Jeff, I agree, it will be just really the icing on the cake for the amazing new Northfield Community Education Center. So with that, we have our future meetings with the current Minnesota Stay-at-Home Guidance. We know, and based on the resolution we passed this evening, we know that Monday, April twenty-seventh at seven PM is our next regular board meeting. And that will be conducted via teleconference. Following that, our other board meetings for May are Monday, May eleventh and Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. And we will thus proceed in not making a decision on how those main meetings will be conducted until we get closer to that time. So thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We have to thank Dr. Hillman and Anita Ozzy for your work in getting all of us confident with how the meeting was going to be conducted tonight and ensuring that all the technology was going to be in place. And I think things went off very smoothly. So thank you very much for all your upfront effort in securing that for us. And, you know, we've said it a number of times this evening, but I just don't think we can say enough thanks to the district staff, administrators, Anita Ozzy and Dr. Hillman for the outstanding work you're doing. And will continue to do. As a board, we're confident our district and our community will continue to rise to the challenges, the health pandemic, and emerge even stronger in a, in a number of ways. So we obviously all look forward to a time when we can all be together again. But in the meantime, take care and stay well. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Noel would move to adjourn.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy.
Second by Amy. So we have a motion by Noel and it's seconded by Amy. And Anita will take the final roll call vote for the evening on adjournment. Anita.
Braniac.
Aye.
Gerwitz.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Pritchard.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Stratmon.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.